Welcome, everyone, this evening. We'll go ahead and start, let's see. Larry, do you want to kick it off here?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We've been meeting with our professional service partners for the last several months, and tonight is a bit of the culmination of bringing our last professional service partner to the council meeting in request of asking them to give a bit of an introduction on the organization and perhaps some of their oversight on the particular topic. Tonight, we've got the Penile County Water Augmentation Authority, sometimes known as PICWA, that, and Mr. Joe Singleton is here tonight, and it looks like he's got our representative from Casa Grande, Mr. Craig McFarland, by his side as well. This particular entity is a little different than our other professional services partners in the sense that there's some statutory responsibility that we have within Penile County, and while I think technically we are a member of the organization, it does give us a, an opportunity to have a seat on the board. And so, all, I don't want to steal any of Joe's thunder, but, so I'll hand the baton to him and let him give all of you a bit more information on PICWA and the emphasis on water. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you for that introduction, Larry. Mayor Fitzgibbons, council, thank you for having us back. As Larry has alluded to, I am Joe Singleton, and I have been the executive director of the Penile County Water Augmentation Authority for the last 15 years. Snuck up on me, too. Prior to that, I spent about 13 years over at the Department of Water Resources, and I was the last AMA director to have an office in Casa Grande, so. I do have a couple of slides. Thank you to Mr. Weaver for the save on the slide decks when I got here, but. The Augmentation Authority is a corporate and political body that can act on its own official corporate name. We're enfranchised in Title 45, which is the statutes that have a lot of the groundwater stuff in it, as, as our own political subdivision of the state. The name's a little bit of a misnomer. We're not an office of the county, and our geographical footprint isn't even all of Penile County. It's, it's based on the Penile AMA Basin, which is defined by DWR as five sub-basins within it, the two biggest of which are the Eloy Sub Basin and the Maricopa Stanfield one, and that's where you're pumping your groundwater from. So, our goal is to support development of responsible, collaborative, and sustainable water planning and management within that area that I just delineated. So, a little further for some activities, regional water planning, assist providers in meeting the requirements of the Groundwater Management Act of 1980. That's, that covers a lot of ground. Cooperating augmentation of water supplies and represents the AMA interest in developing Arizona water policy, which is what I've spent a lot of this year doing so far. So, our board members. Mr. Rains introduced one of them, Mr. McFarland, who I still occasionally call mayor, I am sorry, Mayor Fitzgibbons, does still represent the city of Casa Grande. I assume he worked that out with you. He told me he did. Supervisor Steve Miller represents Penile County. Melissa Campbell is representing Coolidge. David Malowicz is representing Eloy. Well, I could read all the names, but we, we have a mix of citizens, elected officials, and city staff. It makes a really good mix. One of the, one of the more interesting things is we also have two, two members of irrigation districts on our board. You don't always see municipal water use and agricultural water use mixed on groups like this, so I think that really provides a nice perspective, as well as two large private water companies on there to get their perspective as, for utilities that are regulated through the ACC and don't just have their rates set by Ameren Council. Our chairman, Bill Collins, also represents Papico Buttes Domestic Water Improvement District, so he brings a different perspective of some smaller pumpers that aren't dealing with, say, well fields on, on the scale of some of the other larger ones. So, I have an activity update, things we've just been up to over the last several years, and some that are, been ongoing until more recently. We hired Matrix New World to analyze DWR's late 2019 groundwater model of the AMA and suggest changes. The impetus to that is they'd been holding on to the model for a long time. They kept telling folks that we couldn't necessarily get new assured water supplies down here because they weren't sure about the groundwater quantity, but they didn't want to tell us exactly what it was. There was a legislative process that kind of forced their hand on releasing the model, and more so than actually taking issue with the nuts and bolts of the model, there, there were some corrections that the, the Matrix work suggested that I think they did implement. But even beyond that was the way that they were making their assured water supply assumptions for that program based off of that model, and that's where a lot of our work went into, was suggesting things like different well spacing that was still within regulations and some things like that to, to where you could look ahead at that 100-year projection and have it be a little better than what they were saying. So, we substantially supported the, the technical work of the Penile Stakeholder Group that was kind of leading that effort, did submit a package of recommended changes to the department on the way that that program is administered, and we're still waiting for some results in response to that, although there has been quite a bit of back and forth, mostly with Department Hydrology staff since the time we submitted that. That ties in to some other activities. We've done ADAS, it stands for Alternative Pathway to a Designation of Assured Water Supply, and it was passed a year ago and has subsequently been sued twice before being implemented, designed to allow within the assured water supply rules a way for continued subdivision development despite what that groundwater modeling shows as a lack of physical availability in our AMA and in the Phoenix AMA to, to a different scale. This was a program that would recognize the deficit in the physical availability and make some allowances, mostly in exchange for some additional replenishment and some accounting for some groundwater use that isn't accounted for in the current version of the rules. So, you'll see the last bullet on this slide, accounting for non-subdivision use. When you're designated, you got to account for all the water use. When you just do certificates, you only account for the subdivisions that came in post 1995. This would allow additional groundwater use, but require all of that to actually be accounted for. Arizona Water tells me that they're looking at it and going to try to submit an application to do that, which if it were accepted and the program continued to stay in place through the legal challenges, would allow for them to go ahead and take new plats on, and for subdivision work to continue. Right now, there's kind of a companion piece to that idea. It's being called AGD Urban, and it's designed to provide a physical availability credit towards the physical availability of groundwater, which is one of the assured water supply requirements that you have to meet to put a subdivision in, through a relinquishment of the AGD, the AGD water right. I'm using relinquish advisedly because there's so many other words that have a different legal meaning within the Department of Water Resources context, so. This would, so far, would require the land to meet some irrigation history criteria, and it's, there's two processes going on right now involving a DWR process where they're looking at kind of housing this concept within the current assured water supply rules, which they would amend to, to take it in, and there's a legislative process currently going on that contemplates, contemplates it through a statutory change. They're still pretty far apart. They are talking to each other, but the way they're, they're looking at certain key elements is a little apples and oranges, so I'm not sure how that's all going to come together or if it is. The Senate group is supposed to meet again tomorrow, so I'm hopeful I'll hear a little bit more on the plans for that one. Right now, we have a bill in process to clean up some of our bonding language. Our original statutes were passed in 1993. For those of you who may have been following water stuff for a long time, it's in the middle of them trying to figure out how to accommodate assured water supplies. They hadn't enacted the GRD stuff yet, and this was part of a Penile response in trying to get ahead of something, and it was a pretty good one, except that it didn't have an appropriation tied to it like the GRD did, to go buy water to take care of what they were trying to take care of. Consequently, we can do revenue bonding. We can't do general obligation bonds, but we'd never actually used the language. So, we had it reviewed, reviewed by bonding attorneys, Greenberg, Charag, Stifel Nichols Company, who recently did the amendment, all the WIFA language, and they made a set of recommended changes. So, right now, I think I got a email from my lobbyist about 45 minutes ago saying we passed out a house cow today, so it'll be ready for final consideration over there when they might choose to calendar that. So, we're still alive, and I'm, I'm hopeful it'll go through. It's, it could end up being an important tool, especially if we end up with water from a modified Bartlet Dam. So, we became a steering committee member and a cost share partner for the feasibility study to look at a Bart, to look at Bartlet Dam modification as, as some alternatives to some stuff that Salt River Project was looking at in order to mitigate losing capacity at Horseshoe Dam. It's silted up quite a bit since they put it in, and when they did a study on what it was going to cost to regain that capacity from its silting up, creating additional capacity at Bartlet looked more cost-effective than actually trying to dredge out the capacity at a horseshoe. So, it hasn't been all the way through, through the process with the feds yet, but this is kind of the idea where we're all coming from. So, we're hopeful that it'll result in some new surface water supplies by making the dam taller and therefore being able to hold more surface water behind it. So, that's what us and all of the other partners are kind of hoping for right now, and it's struggling through all the kinds of things that those kinds of processes go through, and the construction costs are going up, and people are starting to get tight and talk about lawsuits, so we'll see how that one goes. The last one is, this is an activity from a couple, couple of years ago where we instituted a study to look at a regional cloud seeding program, and got some really surprising results back, but for cloud seeding, they, they use crystals or salts to seed the clouds to foster more rainfall or more efficient rainfall. The seeding agent, and there's a couple of choices, are obviously environmentally safe, but when they looked at our area, they said there was about 23 days during the summer that might be appropriate for cloud seeding, and it could result in a whole lot of additional water at a fairly reasonable cost. The, the trade-off is we can't really control where the water falls, when it falls, but I did ask one of my agricultural board members if they got enough rain to, to skip one watering cycle during the summer, how much it would result in, and it was enough to pay for the program. So, it's something we're still taking a look at. There is some concern, although there's studies that says it's safe and it's inactive and insoluble in water with the main seeding agent, and in particular, in particular, the, one of the Indian tribes expressed some, some concerns about us using that. We're actually have got, recently gone back to the consultant and looked to see what kind of a cost proposal they could put together if we were to do that program with a salt agent, so basically a calcium chloride type agent, same kind of thing that, and Gatorade and a bunch of other stuff we already consume. So, those are the kinds of things we've been up to, I guess, over the last couple of years, some of which are ongoing. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you might have them. It's easy to go into the weeds on some of this stuff, and I usually try to stay out of it unless you want to go there with me.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Who wants to go in the weeds? No questions at this time? No? Okay.
I have. We, as a council, we get a lot of information on effluent and managing that, selling that. Are, are you tied into that at all? Is there a connection?
I haven't been the one sending you the information, but if you want to talk about it, we can.
Briefly.
Well, I know in the last 25 years, I've been through probably three cycles with the city where they come up with a grand plan for the effluent that involves making a project that looks like Gilbert or Avondale, and then we talk about it until it runs into regulatory problems and put it back on a shelf for a while. And I don't remember when the last time we had a discussion like that was. I think it was probably before, I think it was while you were looking at expanding the treatment plant the last time. And it's doable, and it's a great source of water, and you guys do control it. The issue with using effluent is you have to match the water quality with what you want to do with the water, which may or may not require some additional treatment, which means money, and oftentimes, the best place to use the effluent isn't necessarily right next door to the treatment plant, so then you got to put in distribution lines to get it to where it's the most used, which also means money. So, those are some of the challenges. I know we've, we turned the regional park into almost a rice paddy in the past to, to try to accommodate it because it has to go somewhere when it leaves the treatment plant, but it is becoming, it is becoming more sophisticated, and as the cost of other water supplies keeps going up, treating it to some standard to where it's of more use is becoming more and more palatable.
Okay.
No pun intended.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Well, just real quick on the effluent. I know one of our plants was great until we found out the ground right there was not very good for recharging, so it goes back to cost running it somewhere, and it has to be within a mile to get the credit. But we went to, some of us went to the CAP dinner the other night, and they were talking about our water supply and everything, and it wasn't a lot of good news. Do you have any good news for us?
Odd you would bring it up, but I, I talked to our lawyer at lunchtime, Mr. Cooper, and he said, "Thanks for making me feel better," and he meant it ironically. So, I have good news. The one thing I try to leave people with that don't have to do water every day is you're, you're in pretty much no danger of going home tonight, turning on your tap and having spit sand at you. You're fine, you're fine that way. When we talk about some of the water challenges that we're faced with, we're, we're talking about math that goes out 100 years. That's how the state assured water supply program works. You have to count for 100 years of your groundwater demand. So, it's easy to get lost in the hoopla of all of this, and there's a lot of interest in subdivision growth, most of it for, some of it not for, you know, whether we're going to go to all rental units because that gets around assured water supplies, or the fact that home prices keep going up and are harder and harder for, for new homeowners to come in and, and get themselves a house. What we're talking about is water supplies that are 100 years out in the future. You and I are okay. I'm in my late 50s. I'm, I'm probably okay during the time I need to be personally concerned, but we're, we're talking about concern for our children and our grandchildren. And I personally think it's fortunate that there are some state laws that kind of speak to it and look that far ahead, because I've had conversations over the last 25 years with people from Australia and LA and some places that just off the top of my head, I would have thought, had, would have put a lot of thought into how these kinds of things work just because of their environment, and I came away finding out, no, they really haven't because they're asking me what to do. So, that's the, that's the thought I would try to leave you with, but, I mean, it's well worth paying attention to this stuff. It's just among everybody in the room. I think I'm the only one who ought to lose sleep, sleep over it.
I appreciate that, and the, the other thing is I'm glad we have a local organization lobbying for our water because, again, at the CAP, the Penile AMA, if most people don't know, has taken the majority of cuts out of any place in Arizona, and it seems to be that they, they kind of, well, since we're the least populated area in the, in the state as far as this water stuff goes and the AMAs, we usually get the, the dry bucket, right? So, I'm glad that we have you guys advocating for us on, on different levels and, and remembering.
I, I appreciate that, and Mr. McFarland would like, like to remind me that there are two organizations doing that because I believe the Penile Partnership is.
Yeah. Well, you were here, too, Craig, so.
I, I, I do appreciate that, and our growers have taken the lion's share of, of those, of those shortages in a state that took the majority of the shortages off the Colorado system just by design. We, we agreed to a junior status years and years ago to get the canal built. It was something that the California Federal Delegation kind of forced on us in that I've always assumed begrudgingly accepted. I hope it was begrudging anyway, but we do get the earliest cuts, and the CAP system takes those cuts, and the agricultural water is among the first supplies cut, and that's the situation that we have been faced with. And you asked me to make you feel better, and I don't know if I can do that, but to make the compound matters, Penile actually only has one representative to the CAP board. They kind of weighted it by population, so there's several Pima County members and a bunch of Maricopa County ones, and I guess the good news is our one is Steve Miller, and he's not very shy, so.
And he has your ear, right? Oh, your ear. Any other questions?
No.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and Craig, thank you for continuing to represent the city. I know you're keeping us abreast of what's going on, so please continue to let us know how we, as a city, can help those efforts. Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, let me just spend a few minutes before I hand the baton to Mr. Tice to talk about our next topic. All of you should have received an email from me last week describing what we thought was going to be a very fruitful discussion at a study session related to some proposed zoning code text amendments that, quite frankly, Paul's been working on for probably nine months or more, and really dealing with development review process, public engagement, and notification processes. And for all, for the Ameren Council and all of our residents to, to kind of understand the context, there have been the last two or three legislative sessions, there's been a number of bills that have been considered, some of those have, have made it through and been vetoed, related to the state controlling our zoning capabilities at a, at a local level. I believe that Casa Grande has been one of the few municipalities that have been trying to bring new ideas and concepts that find a balance between, between development and our community engagement, and, and we, we seem to be, you know, about, about a year ahead of where the legislature thinks we should be. And, and so, last year, after a number of bills did pass that required us to begin to report on the amount of time it takes to issue various plans and the like, we elected to start going down a path to look at text amendments, code amendments, that ultimately would become more efficient for, for the development community as well as participate in a community engagement platform. And we were, Paul had actually scheduled these items for the Planning and Zoning Commission last Thursday for their review, and we were going to brief the council this evening, but the governor signed into effect a bill that likely impacts a good portion, I won't say all, but a good portion of the work that we've been doing the last couple of years. And so, I thought it would be wise for Paul to give the council a bit of an overview and perhaps even give a bit of explanation on the bill and what the bill says that ultimately will have the impact, but we're, at least at this point, as a staff, we feel that we need to spend more time analyzing the bill and ultimately looking at the interpretation of that bill before we bring these code amendments to you. And so, with that, Paul, you want to pick up from there?
Sure, Larry. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, members of council, so, as Larry mentioned, I have been spending the last couple of months drafting some amendments to your zoning code with the objective of achieving these purposes, enhancing public engagement and expanding public engagement, increasing efficiency and effectiveness of the development review process to achieve a code that was concise, easily understood, and internally consistent, and to improve customer service. I think you all would agree that those are, are, are objectives that we all, we should be striving for, and I think many, the code amendments that I have drafted go a long ways in achieving many of these, and I will, I'll talk about that to a certain degree, but as Larry mentioned, the, the, the new law that was signed by the governor last Monday, we could go today, threw a bit of a wrench into some of the things that we were, we were doing. These are the actual ordinances that have been drafted. We wrote a new chapter on the zoning code called Citizen Review Process. I am going to talk about that in a little bit more detail. We revised Chapter 1768. We basically rewrote the whole thing, which sets forth all of our administrative procedures and to kind of streamline to the degree possible. We revised our conditional use and, and tables and permitted use tables to try to push as much as we could down to the staff level, I mean, interestingly enough, and, and streamline that process, and I, I can talk about that just a little bit as well. But, House Bill 2447, which takes effect at the end of this year, December 31st, is causing us to pause and reevaluate a couple of aspects of our code amendment. So, I'm just going to talk a little bit about what the law says, and then we're going to talk, I'll dive into a little bit greater detail on all these. So, the first is that, it says that requires rather than allows the legislative body of a city or town by ordinance to do the following. A, authorize administrative personnel to review and approve site plans, development plans, land divisions, lot line adjustments, lot ties, preliminary plats, final plats, and plan amendments without a public hearing. So, that's, that's the key, without a public hearing. So, what that, on the face of it, seems to do is say that all of our, our major and minor site plans that we require prior to building new commercial buildings, new industrial buildings, new multifamily buildings, those major and minor site plans can no longer be required to go to planning commission to, for a public hearing. That's what it kind of sounds like on the face of it. Now, there are those who read this and say that, no, it's sort of keeps it optional still for communities to do that or not do it. You know, the only change to this law was to change a May to a Shale. This, the, the current law was in effect, it said, gave us the right to do this if we wanted to. wanted to, but this, the new law changed the May to a shale. So I think it makes it mandatory. Our city attorneys are looking into it and are going to try to, you know, determine the, you know, what this means and how it impacts our review process, but currently our initial thinking is that all of our site plans, our major and minor site plans have to be done administratively by staff and cannot be forwarded to planning commission for a public hearing. The follow-up question for that is, okay, so we get an administrative decision to approve or deny a site plan, is that decision appealable or reviewable by planning commission, right? Because if you, if it is, then that's an appeal hearing that is a public hearing and is that allowed? Don't know the answer. We have to look into that. And of course, as you know, planning commission decisions on major site plans, the applicant, if they were denied by planning commission, could ask for a review of city count, by city council of that decision and of course that's a public hearing. So what happens to that appeal process as well as the initial review process? We don't know the answers. We're, we're going to look into it and, and come back and regroup once we know those answers and modify the code to make sure it complies with whatever HB 2447 means. The interesting thing is one of the changes that we had, we're making with this, with our code change was to allow smaller commercial buildings and smaller multifamily buildings to be approved by staff without planning commission approval. The proposal was if you were building a new commercial building or a new industrial building of 16,000 square feet or smaller, you could go for administrative review and you could build triplexes and fourplexes with administrative review, but the larger projects would have still required planning commission approval. Those smaller projects that we were trying to authorize staff to be able to review administratively, we also had appeal rights built in so that either the applicant or surrounding property owner that was aggrieved by the administrative decision could appeal that decision to planning commission. But of course, we don't know if any of that is really allowed under HB 2447 now. So we're going to evaluate that. And it's kind of wide ranging because you can see final plaits here. I mean, we weren't, we weren't to the point of modifying our subdivision code yet and we were going to modify it to allow certain small subdivisions to be reviewed administratively, but this seems to say that all preliminary plaits and all final plaits regardless of their size or how many lots, we can't send to, they, they, they can't send to planning commission or to council. Have to do that administratively as well. So wide ranging implications potentially. We're going to pause a little bit on that 1768 administrative procedures to better understand what the implications are. And as you'll see in a minute, the other code changes we had, we had drafted with citizen review process and the changing of, of conditional uses and permitted uses all kind of tied in as a package with 1776, excuse me, 17.68 administrative procedures. So we're going to pause all those until we can figure this out and, and it'll be brought back to you. The B is interesting and authorize, we shall authorize administrative personnel to review and approve design plans, design review plans based on objective standards without public hearing. In our process, we call those housing product. It's the housing design for new subdivisions. Interestingly enough, last year, we already made that code change. We already made those administrative, right? We beat the legislator, legislator to it, right? Allow at-risk submittals for preliminary, onsite preliminary grading and drainage. Work on infrastructure. We already do that. That's been our SOP for years that we allowed at-risk grading plans. So, you know, as Larry mentioned, you know, our local processes in many ways, we're already addressing, I think, many of these concerns that the legislature might have been hearing at a local level, but, but they've, they've initiated some what appear to be broad brush solutions here. Then the last one is allow applicants with a history of compliance with building codes and regulations to be eligible for expedited permit review called self-certification. And actually that is something we've been looking at as well for a little bit and we, we're close to launching a pilot program on self-certification for certain types of building permits. So that's HB 2447 and that's why we can't this evening give you, doesn't make sense for us to give you a full briefing on all the code amendments, but I do want to talk about certain portions of those amendments just to give you a feel for what we've been working on and, and get any feedback you might have on the direction we're taking. So the code amendment really started with creating this new Chapter 17.66 Citizen Review Process. And the objective of this new chapter of the zoning code was to enhance our public engagement process on development review, on development applications. Staff is of the belief that the time to engage the public in development review applications is early on when we can sit down with the applicant and with any neighbors who have concerns and hash those out, understand them and find design solutions that address those concerns. Interesting enough, we don't believe that public engagement is that productive at the public hearing process because, you know, it's hard to negotiate solutions from the dais, right? It's much easier if we can do it internally when we have the applicant, we have the neighbors or the concerned citizens and we can really dive into what the concerns are and the appropriate solutions. But this new chapter talks about increasing the use of neighborhood or community meetings on development applications. Those are typically at the pre-application stage, even before the application is submitted. We want to go, reach out, talk to those who are potentially impacted and get, understand what concerns they may have. Mailing notices to owners of surrounding properties, city website posting, site posting, newspaper notices, social media, email. We use all of those techniques to reach out to the public. More specifically, our, our public notice would still be optional at the pre-application stage because frankly, some developments, there's no concerns, right? There's just maybe it's a greenfield site and there's nothing around it, but if it's an infill site, there's probably likely to be public concerns about that development, whether it's compatible or not, what's, what's being proposed. But the zoning code text amendment allows the planning director and the planner, planning staff to determine which pre-application, pre-application projects need neighborhood notice, neighborhood meetings, et cetera. Internal review. We, this chapter makes internal review, public notice mandatory at that stage. Internal review is once the application is formally submitted by the applicant and it's been distributed to the various city staff for review and comment, at the same time, we would notify the public that we're reviewing that application and provide them information on the project and tell them how they can get more information if they desire on the project. Really just understand if there are neighborhood concerns and if our surrounding property owner concerns and if there are, the planner then would, would facilitate meetings between the development applicant and the concerned citizens to talk about those issues and try to resolve, revolve, resolve the conflict, address, mitigate their concerns through design changes, all during the internal review stage. Before, we were going to move it to the public hearings because as I mentioned, we'd like to resolve any issues that we can identify before we get to the public hearing, but under this change of 2447, it's a good thing we made this change because that's now where we're going to be hearing all the public comment is at the internal review stage, right? If there's no public hearings, the opportunity for the public to comment and address their concerns is to staff, planning staff during the internal review. And, and I'm confident the planning staff will do a good job in resolving those issues and addressing them to the degree possible. And, and most of our applicants are very willing to work with staff and with the neighbors to make changes to address their concerns. If we're still allowed to have public hearings or for those applications that can have public hearings for sure, which might be conditional use permits, zone changes, all of those can still have public hearings, public notice again is mandatory, but hopefully all, any, any issues that might be associated with that application hopefully have been worked out to the degree possible internal review, but for those applications that are subject to public hearings, public notice will be done again. So public notice, formal public notice, mandatory, two stages, optional at the pre-app. We've also included the ability to, we've set 300 feet as the minimum distance for notification for adjoining property owners, but allows the, the planning director and the staff to increase that distance to a further distance, 500, 1,000 feet, whatever really is necessary for those projects that have, to potentially have greater impact than on just the adjacent property owners. But it's discretionary, but the code specifically allows for the increase from the 300 feet distance to a greater distance. You might note that the state law is only 200 feet, so we're already, we're doing more than the state law with 300, but we think in certain instances, we should go beyond that where there's potential for additional adverse impact. We specified some, some signage size, you know, we use signs, you know, for zoning, they should be bigger, four by eight, other applications four by four. You know, and, and I've been thinking about this the other day is that if we're not going to have public hearings, we probably need to put signs on these properties during the internal review stage. In addition to just sending notices, we should put a poster, a yellow sign, this project's under internal review for, you know, a, a new apartment complex, a new commercial building, a new industrial building, whatever, but, but because those signs are pretty effective, you know, they stand out, people stop and they read them. So we'll probably have to modify this chapter to talk about putting signs up at the internal review stage if it happens to be that we're not going to have public hearings. This is, this is kind of our postcard, our notice, our notification postcard that we send to adjoining property owners and, and it's evolved a little bit recently to become pretty effective, right? We now are able to embed, you know, a little aerial, tells you where the site is, we can do the QR code, allow, allows you to link to the actual, to the plans that have been submitted, the elevation drawings, the site plan, whatever, gives you information on the planner, who, their, their phone number, their email. And so we're trying to provide people with a notice that really lets them, gives them the information unnecessary to really try to understand what's being proposed and the ability to reach out for additional information if they, if they are so inclined. This will go out with every application that we receive if we enact this new chapter of the zoning code. Before I talk about next steps, I want to just talk for just a moment about some of the other changes that we had been, we were proposing. It's like the bottom bullet here, this Chapter 1768 Administrative Procedures. One of the things we were trying to do was we, we were trying to identify those land uses that currently are conditional uses that need public hearings before planning commission as well as a major site plan and allow them just to be processed with a major site plan or a minor site plan depending how big they are. Couple of examples of things that we thought no longer needed conditional uses where we have this use called convenience food restaurant. That's a conditional use. Now, most of you hear convenience food restaurant, they define it as it's a restaurant where you, that you're not necessarily having sit-down service with, with table staff, table wait staff, but you're going to the counter, you're ordering food and you're either eating it in the restaurant or you're leaving. Historically, those were kind of fast food restaurants through drive-throughs, right? Which can have adverse impact and so they should be conditional uses. But there was a whole new type of restaurant called quick serve restaurants that have evolved where there's no drive-throughs, but they still have, you go to the front counter and you order and you can eat inside, you can take it out and they have no adverse impact. Good examples are Chipotle, Subway, Stone Cold Creamery, all of those were requiring conditional use permits, but there's, there's really no reason for it, right? They, they don't have adverse impact. So one of the code changes was to push those convenience food restaurants without drive-throughs to be eligible for administrative review depending on the size of the restaurant. The, some other ones were we expanded the zone districts in which bowling alleys can be, can be constructed. We allowed for conference centers, uses like the property to be allowed in industrial zones as a, our I-1 zone as a conditional use. So we looked at things in our zoning code that really we weren't addressing well and tried to refine it in a way that made it easier. In every case, it made it easier, never made it harder. We did put add uses that we are getting in the community today, but we don't address well in the, or at least address specifically in the zoning code, data centers. So you know, so we highlighted the zones that data centers were allowed in and also battery storage facilities are kind of new uses that our zoning code did not have any provisions for. So we were refining the permitted uses and conditional uses to streamline as much as possible. So for next steps, staff and specifically the, the city attorney will be doing some review and advising us on what we need to, changes we need to make to comply with HB 2447. And then we'll modify 1768 Administrative Procedures to, to implement those recommendations. We'll bundle it up back and we'll take it to planning commission for a formal public hearing and recommendation and then back to council. Be happy to answer the questions you have about that.
Well, thank you, Paul, especially for all that hard work and then to get to this point. And, and you're leaving. This is like the way to, the way to leave this, right? After all that work. So, okay, Bob, did you have a question?
Yeah. Paul, I guess all about HB 2447, did, did we see this coming? Has there been some discussion in the legislature or from the governor? Because it seems like it's anti-public involvement and, and also have you been able to discover or realize what, what the motivation is behind this? Are they, are they trying to help the developer to come in, check the boxes and proceed or?
Well, Councilmember Huddleston, I think, I think the politics around this are pretty complex. I did see that the league of, Arizona League of Cities and Towns supported the legislation. There were certain cities in Arizona that supported the legislation. I'm not sure all the reasons why they did. I don't know if city manager has any other comments you might make to that.
Well, I would just, I would just build on Mr. Tice's feedback and I agree that there was, there certainly was some support by, by various municipal entities on this particular bill and I think that as the, just given the number of bills that have been introduced the last several years and, and attempting to, and you're absolutely right, Councilmember Huddleston, it really is to try to streamline the process. There is a, particularly for development, there is this perception that government, that local government will stand between these developments for a variety of reasons. And, and, and I think that this bill ultimately became one that... And, and I think that this bill ultimately became one that many municipalities felt like they could tolerate versus having to fight the fight, and ultimately defending additional loss of control. And so it was a bit of a middle ground bill, if you will. And as you heard tonight from Mr. Tice, there's a number of these elements that we were already practicing in Casa Grande, and some that we were heading towards. I think our primary pause was the fact that the broad, the broad spectrum of project types that ultimately could progress without any type of public involvement, and public hearings specifically. And, and so, so yes, there have been, there have been as many housing bills considered these last couple of years as there have been water bills. And so there's just a lot of movement on this front to try to, to try to improve the efficiency timeline of municipal government. And from our perspective, we continue to take the stance that we believe that, that that ought to happen at a local level, that we should not subordinate local control, that are, that we have to find the balance between development and our community needs.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, Matt?
So, I don't know how far we can get on HB 2447, but what I'm reading, you can do it without a public hearing, but can you have a public hearing? Does it specifically prevent us from having a public hearing?
Well, and we, we can go into more detail, but, you know, the specific language, right? Prior to 2447, and this is what Director Tice was talking about, was it, it allowed us to do that, right? And so we were looking at doing that for certain items, but certainly not for all of them. Now it says you shall authorize the administrative personnel to do this without a public hearing. So I think they're pretty clear in terms of what they, what they do.
We can still authorize them to do that, but we can still have a public hearing.
You have to tell them they can do it without a public hearing. So if you do a public hearing, you will be violating the statute, right? So, but, that's also why the revisions to 1766 that Director Tice talked about are important. Because while we may not be able to have a public hearing to approve them, it doesn't mean we have to do it without public input. And so that's the proactive things that, that, you know, Paul has been working on, will help us in that, to ensure that we continue to get public input, even on those things that we do. And, and like Director Tice said, we're also looking at how this bill's going to be sort of implemented. We're going to talk about it from a city attorney standpoint and otherwise, to talk about potential appeals, right? Maybe it won't be a public hearing, but nonetheless have public input at appeals. So, so we are going to continue to look at ways to ensure that the public has knowledge of the development things and input into our development processes. That's going to be the critical piece, whether that's a public hearing, or whether it's beginning with neighborhood meetings, which is always a great way to start, right? Talking to the people in the neighborhood, because that's how word gets out, not just the people within 300 feet, but the people that talk to their neighbors. So, that's still going to be a big part of what we do here in the city.
Because this doesn't usurp the local control as much as other bills that have been proposed over the last several years have, so I'm, I'm sure that's why it garnered more support from some municipalities. But, you know, we've made a lot of changes proactively, Paul, to your credit, and, and you know, we get developer after developer up here, and I know they're just trying to get their projects through, but they say how nice it has been to work with the City of Casa Grande's department, so I know you're on your final tour, but thank you. Because, and you brought up in the first slide, this customer service, because here in your department, you don't make anything or sell anything, except for permits, you can't put them on sale, I mean, they, they are a certain price, so you have to provide customer service, and that, that's the biggest part of it. And I, I think you've done a good job of improving that over the last several years, and will continue to. And now with our, you know, with our increasing the distance, I always thought that was a good one, because 100 feet, a lot of times, just gets across the road, right? Not really anybody. But now we have new tools, like our city program, the 411, and then the new GIS, we can put alerts on there to say, hey, there's a, there's something happening here, so you might want to, here's a click on this to submit your input, or however we're going to do that, but it's a good opportunity to use, you know, to use that technology to help our citizens. Because, you know, there's been a lot of projects that have been made better because of public involvement, you know, for sure, because you don't think of all the angles all the time, so. It's good, but again, thank you, Paul, for your hard work, and you were always doing it, you know, even the stuff that is, people don't see a lot, the minutia of changing all these codes, which I think you enjoy, because that's your, your vocation, but a lot of us would just be like, man, let it go. But it's made it a lot better, you know, as a city and for our citizens, so thank you for that, and, and good luck going forward. Thanks.
Questions, comments? No, and I just wanted to piggyback on that, that the public input is important, so I was going to ask the same, how can we get around it? Not so much get around it, not get around, but you know, just make sure that we are doing whatever we can for that input. And so it's probably going to find new ways of communicating to the public on when they should get involved, and how they can get involved, it's just a new way of doing it versus the public hearing, because it is so important, and you, and you, you know, you were really pushing that, and, and so, we just have to keep that, keep it going as much as we can, Brett, when you review it. But, yeah, I mean, it, it's crazy to me, I don't, I don't understand how some cities would approve, but, you know, I guess they do. Politics, politics, but, but no, and thank you for doing this. I know when Larry said that you were going to review it, and then all of a sudden, there was like a halt, and it's like, whoa, wait, so we appreciate all that. But hopefully, you know, we'll still be able to use many of that, those changes that you have here for us. So thank you for everything. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Good, thank you.
Okay, on to the next one, you're, you're the next one, right?
Yeah.
You're not leaving yet?
Yes, no.
Madam Mayor, it's, it's Mr. Tice's final presentation.
Shouldn't we have a cake?
He is, he is coming back at the next meeting to be recognized.
Okay, okay.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, so I do want to take a few moments to talk about the Florence Boulevard corridor design, design concept report, our DCR. I want to start by just refresh you, memory that the design concept report has three segments, the, starting at the east, we have the freeway, which is about a mile long. We have the longest stretch, which is our midtown, measured that the other day, came up to be 2.75 miles. And then our downtown, shortest segment, which is about three quarters of a mile. So we have three, three segments, each has a little bit of a different design concept, as you've been briefed before, and I'm sure you are aware. The, the DCR was considered by the planning commission at their March 6 meeting, they held a full public hearing on the, on the DCR. And I would, I think it's fair to say that the majority of the public comments were generally supportive of the DCR, but indicated that the downtown segment should include the five-lane configuration, and not, and not the three-lane option. Of course, we had two options in there. Accordingly, staff is recommending that the three-lane configuration option be dropped from the DCR, and that we work with the, within the right-of-way constraints that we have in the downtown segment to do as much enhancement of that street area as we can with the given right-of-way. Planning commission did unanimously vote to recommend council approve the DCR, but they imposed a change, that they recommended that the downtown segment be classified as the first phase of the project versus the freeway segment, which staff was recommending. So, you know, as I've been thinking about that, and, you know, I understand why the planning commission recommended the downtown segment be the first phase against the staff recommendation, and there clearly are pros and cons to both approaches, to starting on either end, the west end or the east end. So, I thought I might just discuss with you this evening a few of the thoughts that I had on the pros and cons for each. The downtown phase at, at three quarters of a mile is the shortest segment, and thus could be completed in less time. Since there's no median, or no travel, nor bike lane construction is involved with the downtown segment, the cost will be lower than the other segments, on a per, you know, linear foot basis, if you will, whatever measurement you want to make. Completion of that, of the downtown phase will have a positive impact on the impression the public has of the downtown area. I think there was a lot of discussion at the planning commission about wanting to enhance the downtown area and the positive impact that they thought that the DCR would have in the general downtown area. And then, due to the relatively small lot sizes and number of businesses, the construction activity within the right-of-way would likely have more short-term adverse impact. I mean, while construction is happening, because of the small lot sizes, there will be disruption, it will be minimized, of course, to the degree possible, but it will occur. You can see here, this is, you know, this is some of the, the encroachments that we might have in the downtown area. And so, with the five-lane configuration, we can, we can make the five-lane configuration look, look significantly better than it does today. I mean, there will be a, a very, a very positive impact on the image and character of the downtown, even keeping the five lanes. It will include, it will continue to have four through lanes with a continuous enhanced left turn, center lane, expanded sidewalk, and other pedestrian scale enhancements to the degree possible. Due to the right-of-way constraints, a bike lane will not be included, sidewalk widening, landscaping, and artwork will be introduced to the extent possible, though. And of course, the downtown entryway sign will be a big part of that, of that downtown segment. To remind you, even when we were recommending that the freeway segment be done as the first phase, we were also recommending that this downtown entryway sign be part of the first phase, regardless of which phase the other street scape improvements we're going to start at.
Paul, is, is this slide what is now Erdman Plaza?
It is. So, some pros and cons for making the freeway phase first. At one mile, it's 25%, slightly longer than the downtown segment, will take a little bit more time to complete. If an additional travel lane is added in each direction, which is what the proposal is, to take it from four to six lanes, along with wider sidewalks and bike lanes, the cost will be significantly higher on a per linear foot basis than the downtown segment. Due to the relatively large lot sizes, many of which are still vacant, the construction activity within the right-of-way would likely have less impact. We're building adjacent to vacant lots, vacant sites, less impact on any businesses. Completion of this phase will have a positive impact on the impression the public has of the city as they enter off the interstate. And the design elements and theme of the DCR can be incorporated into the frontage of the vacant lots as they develop. So we have a number of vacant lots, large ones, that will likely develop within the next, we'll say, five years. And as they develop, they can reflect some of the design, character, and theme of the DCR, and reflect it along their frontages, and their landscaping and highway improvements. So, if you remember, they, again, this is designed, proposed to be increased from four to six travel lanes with a median and turn lanes. Wide sidewalks and a separate bike lane is also proposed for this segment. It also includes a welcoming sign for visitors as they come off the interstate, welcoming them to Casa Grande. So, as you can see, it's, it's a mixed bag, right? There's pros and cons for both, can make the argument either way. So at this point, staff is recommending that the final decision on phasing be delayed until additional analysis can be completed on the right-of-way and construction constraints for both of those downtown and freeway segments, and the matter would be brought back to council for a final decision on the phasing, once that additional information is available. So for next steps, we would move, ask the consultants to revise the DCR, as it's currently authored, to remove the three-lane option, and those designs that are associated with that. We would engage further, in doing further analysis of the right-of-way and construction constraints for both the downtown and freeway segments. We'd come back to council for final adoption and consideration of the, of the DCR. And then, if it was approved, we'd move into creation of what we'll call civil plans, the design and construction plans, and I said, stop, that's a typo, excuse me, for the downtown phase, be for either phase, downtown or freeway, whichever one was selected. And it's part of that civil design process, regardless of which phase we start on, that will involve additional stakeholder engagement with residences, businesses, and property owners, to really talk about the specific design and work through the details, right? And how the design will be done, how it impacts their property, if at all. And as part of that, we would be considering CIP funding for whichever phase that is selected. So, Larry, did you want to add anything to any of that?
I'll add at the end.
Okay. So, that's a wrap for me, so I'm, I'm happy to entertain any, any, any questions or comments?
What a way to end, Eric. And especially with this one, this report here. So, any questions, comments? Sure, Anthony?
Thanks, thanks again, Mr. Tice. We appreciate you and all the work, too. Appreciate you do modify, the modification of the DCR to just remove the three-lane. Appreciate that. Would there be an issue with working on the signage before the construction even started? Would that be an issue, or would we need to go ahead and get the streets in, so we know where the signs need to be? You know what I'm saying? Because I just, I just thought about, you know, I brought, I'm bringing it up because I know that we've talked about this before, and I know we talked about starting I-10 in, and I know the signs needs to be done. The signs look great, even the intersections look great, too. And regardless of where we start, I believe it's just going to be a little traffic, because we're working on the roads, and so you're still going to get some traffic there, but in regards to the signs, are we able to do the signs before the roads?
Councilmember Edwards, I think that that would be feasible for the downtown sign, because you're not really going to move the curb line.
Right.
But on the freeway, the curb line is, is likely to move, and so you really need to get the civil drawings down to understand what, where the curb's moving to, so, because you don't want to impact the sign with the road project, right? But for the downtown, since, you know, the road is basically set, I think the downtown sign could, could proceed, precede the road construction, any other enhancements. It could probably be, you know, Phase 1A, yeah, if you wanted to, yeah.
Right, and I'm bringing it up, that was kind of loaded. Once again, I would prefer our I-10 working its way in, we can still work on that sign on, at the Five Point, get that beautiful sign up there, get that started, put our new sign in, because remember now, that to me, if we're driving in, whether it's on Pinell, whether it's on Florence Boulevard, that we get the signs in place, okay? And so, that's why I would prefer, this is Anthony, that we start I-10, Florence Boulevard, working on the road, put the sign in over, over here at the Five Point first. But that's just Anthony throwing something out.
It's technically feasible, I just, I think.
Thank you, Anthony. Anyone else? Matt?
Yeah, so I know we're, I want everybody to know, we're going to be talking about this a lot before we actually do anything more with a lot more public input. But my friend here, I like doing the freeway side, because that's going to spur development down there, too. You know, they see us investing in our community, people start investing, building stuff there to get us more money to fund the rest of the project, hopefully, is my plan. And the downtown, you know, that'll come, and we'll definitely, definitely invest more. more and more money down there as we have over the past several years. Um, I do want to advocate for bike lanes, though, because, yeah, people say, no one rides their bikes down there. Well, they never will if there's no bike lanes. But anyway, so I know it's hard, but anyway, I, I like that. Um, but anyway, thank you, Paul, for working so hard on this and the guys from J2, and everybody's got citizen input a lot on it. Appreciate the letters and the input and people here. And just remember, we're not making a decision tonight. We will be talking about this a lot to make sure we do it right, because it's such a big project, very important for our city, the, the, uh, the vision of our city and the, the look of our city, too, like the entryway, you know, announce the arrival, uh, when you arrive to our city. So just be watching for more, more input on this from everybody, so thank you. And thanks for making it go smoothly with that change down there, so.
Thanks, Paul.
Paul, I, I want to wholeheartedly thank anybody and everybody that played a part in, uh, dropping the three lane option. Uh, we have, uh, heard about that over and over and over again, and it was clear that the majority of our community did not want that, and so I'm glad it's off the table. Um, the other thing is, I, I, I would, for me, and this is just Bob, like Anthony, uh, said his, I, I would like to keep the freeway portion a priority, uh, for all of the reasons that Anthony and Matt said. Um, but I, but I would like to add that on any traffic, uh, process with, 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 uh, work on the roads, I think safety and the efficient flow of traffic needs to be our, our priorities. And the, the downtown area is primarily aesthetics. I mean, I, I, I think it's good what we're seeing, and I think it'll, it'll, uh, uh, play well with the, with the, uh, citizens. Um, but I, but I do think that, that section, uh, coming off the freeway should be our priority because it, it, it's just going to, uh, there's going to be more and more traffic up there, more and more development, and I think we owe it to our community to, to focus on that, and that, and that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
I'll just kind of throw in my two cents on the, the freeway versus downtown as well. Um, cost of construction, so as it continues to escalate year over year, when you look at, say, the down, or the freeway end is a $30 million price tag, if it goes up by 10%, that's a $3 million hit to the, to the city. Whereas if the downtown goes up by 10%, it's only a $1 million impact to the city. So I would just suggest that we wait to get further analysis, but keep that in mind is that the escalation of the cost of construction is going to be a harder impact at the freeway end than it is going to be on the downtown end.
Good point.
But wait till we see the final analysis, but keep that in mind, that the cost of construction continues to increase.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm on board with the rest of the council members on this. This is exactly, I, I, everything they said is exactly what I agree with, no, no need to reiterate it. But thank you so much. Down, or east side first.
Thank you, Sean. Um, no, Paul, and again, thank you and to all the, the consulting, um, all of the public engagement. You know, we talk about public engagement, and, you know, when, when this came to us just, what is it, a few, a couple of weeks ago, we, at that point, we knew that we were just approving the design concept report. There was nothing that we weren't approving anything, um, you know, it was just those two options in there. But we heard from the public, again, and we heard loud and clear how people felt. And so we, instead of creating, you know, the, the tension and the stress and, you know, anxiety of, of this happening overnight, um, I think this is the right thing to do as far as taking out that one option. Uh, again, you know, I, I just, I personally wanted to just see the whole report, you know, approved, and then as we moved forward, found out what the best way to go. But we, we heard the public loud and clear, there are people that really supported, you know, narrowing down that three lane. And so we, again, appreciate your input and your support, but know that all of, whatever, even, you know, keeping the, the, the five lanes is going to, and all the improvements is still going to add value and beautification and, and bring a lot, um, you know, to, to the community. So I'm excited for the, the whole project and, and, you know, as far as deciding which end to start, you know, I'm, I'm with all of you. I thought, you know, that we, that's why we, we all thought at that point, starting on the freeway side was the best way. But I understand, I listened to the, um, planning and zoning, um, comments and understood, you know, their concern that if it, it's going to take so long to get this end, that it's not going to happen downtown. So, but I think as we can continue with further analysis and find out what the future funding is, we don't know. This could be 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road. And so if it's going to take, you know, 10 years to get to, you know, half of the freeway, you know, aside, then maybe we do consider the downtown. So I think that analysis is going to be important on where we move forward. So, um, so, but, you know, we, we at least have this design, you know, concept report, you know, we'll, at, you know, you say we'll, we'll approve it for future funding and, you know, later, so we can, um, definitely do that. But, um, I just wanted to really thank everyone who put so much time into this. Paul, I know you were trying to get the, you know, we were hoping to have this done before you left, and we, we kind of did, right? So, and, and again, to, to all of, all of the consultants, public, staff, time and energy, um, you know, and, and the community for, for providing that input. So, um, we know we're, you know, we're kind of leaving it open at this time, that we're not making a decision at this time, and we'll just continue to, um, you know, further analysis and find out what funding is, is available and move forward from there. So again, thank you for everyone. Anything else, Larry? No?
Um, nothing really more material. We, we, as staff, we're certainly, uh, hearing the feedback from the mayor and council this evening, and I do agree that while we will move the DCR for, um, very likely without a starting position, uh, due to the additional analysis on the right of way and the financial costs, I think it's, I, I, I'm not sure that, uh, as a community, we have recognized that this is a long-term plan. This is not something that's going to be done in the next two years or five years, very likely. And so, uh, so appreciate the feedback we've received this evening. We will, uh, be making the modifications to the DCR, bringing that back for your acceptance, and then ultimately we will continue the analysis, because I do think that those elements that have been brought up tonight will help council better understand the east side costs and timeline versus the downtown. But, um, I do want to point out to Councilman Edwards' comment about the sign, and I agree with Paul, I think it's something that we may be able to do in the downtown area. We, we do have money budgeted this fiscal year to potentially accelerate that project. So it could, there may be a scenario where we're, where we're taking various components, particularly in the downtown, ahead of it, of us really having a, a primary focus there. So I just wanted to make that point.
Good. Okay, anything else? Okay, with that, Paul, thank you, your last presentation. We wish you all the best, we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the study session. And we'll resume in 12 minutes, 13 minutes.